Oh, boy. Item eighteen, discussion, I'm glad it's one thirty-seven, of sex offender predator resistance, residency, distance requirements, and playground regulations.
Mr. Chairman, members of council, Russ Brown, Senior Assistant County Attorney. Before you have your consideration for direction, will we bring back an ordinance based on your direction to increase the residency restrictions for sexual offenders where they can live next to playgrounds and other certain areas in the law? And then whether you want to restrict unaccompanied adults from going to county playgrounds based on this county. You requested additional information on these two issues, which is before you today. Current state law restricts a thousand feet from schools, childcare, those types of facilities. The, we have other local governments that have increased the residency, residency limits. Here's a few. We have a couple cities as well here in the county that have done it as well. We're recommending up to fifteen hundred feet to increase it up to fifteen hundred feet where they would have to register. Part of the ordinance also would come back with having a positive requirement on a landlord having to check to make sure they're not, if they're within that fifteen hundred feet, they're not, you know, leasing to a registered offender. So that's the part with sexual predators and increasing the residency requirement. Please stop me if you have any questions. I know most briefly already. As far as unaccompanied adults at playgrounds, a couple local governments have done the same where you, an adult that's not accompanied with a minor cannot enter into a designated playground area. There are certain time, place, manner restrictions that we can put in place that narrowly, as long as they're narrowly tailored to accomplish a compelling government interest, then the law is good, as I mentioned, some others have done this. For us, we would need to make sure that there's adequate signage. As you know, a lot of our parks have fences, but not necessarily playgrounds that are inside the parks are not internally fenced. So we'd need to make sure that there are notices that are around the playground. Surface area, our part, our playgrounds have a, a plastic area. Tim Bailey's here, if you have any questions for that. They have a plastic surface area that we would look to designate that as you couldn't go on to that surface if you're not accompanied by a minor as an adult. So we would notice that around the parks, and that would be the notice to the public for the playground area. So those are the two items before you. We're seeking direction on how you want us to proceed, whether to bring back an ordinance to increase the residency restrictions for registered offenders, and whether you want to prohibit unaccompanied adults with minors from designated playground surface areas.
Thank you. Vice Chair Robbins, motion to approve. What are we approving?
Both of them.
Bring it back in ordinance.
Are we, to, are you increasing?
Correct, both, both of his proposed.
What number are you increasing it to?
Fifteen hundred feet.
To fifteen hundred, okay.
And then the additional signage for designated child's play areas. And, Mr. Brown, was there also, did we have something in there for the landlords or maintenance workers, or is that something?
The landlords, as I mentioned in the brief, will come back as a, as a positive duty on them for the fifteen hundred foot increase.
Okay. Second.
So we're clear, the motion is to bring back two draft ordinances, one for the increase to the fifteen hundred feet for the residency restriction, and another one will prohibit adults with unaccompanied minors from designated playgrounds.
Correct. For discussion, Don Dempsey.
Yeah, so what we're saying is that I can't go down to Earl Brown Park and shoot basketball by myself. Is that what we're talking about?
Not at all.
But that would fall within this proposed ordinance.
We're talking about the playground areas, sir, for the, for the minors. So like, Tim's here, our, our playgrounds have a, a surface area that's like the plastic.
Mr. Chair, can you tell me who the second was?
I can. It was Troy Kent? Oh, well, that's not what I was gonna say. I thought it was Don Dempsey.
No. Right, so, good morning, Tim Bailey, Parks Recreation and Culture Director. The, the surface that we're talking about is the, it's called the portent place or the safety surface that's around a playground or at the base of a playground. That's what we're talking about.
And what would the sanctions be for a, an adult going to one of these areas?
Well, if, if you're playing basketball, you know, no problem. If you're standing on that safety surface without a, a minor, you're gonna be asked to leave.
Okay, but what would the sanction be for violating that?
Well, if you don't leave, you'd be trespassed out. If you're, if you leave, off you go.
But the ordinance would also have a penalty provision, and it, just like most of our other ordinances, up to fifty, five hundred dollar fine with, you know, up to the sixty days in jail, so it could be treated as like a, a class three misdemeanor, essentially.
Have you guys ever looked to see how this would affect the ability for people to get housing by changing it from a thousand to fifteen hundred feet? I know they have maps.
Yeah, yes, sir, we did. We, we did the layering with the GIS with your staff.
Yes.
And fifteen hundred feet roughly decreases approximately a third in the unincorporated area that currently the thousand feet allows for residency.
Can you guys provide that map to us so that we can see how this will affect the housing?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Yeah, my concern, guys, I've been dealing with this subject for thirty-three years, both as a prosecutor and a defense attorney, and, you know, the state has already implemented, in my opinion, the state has already implemented pretty severe sanctions. I mean, it's the, the restrictions they place on these people that's very onerous. Most often, in my opinion, they end up going to prison, not because they committed the crime they're accused of, because they plead out to probation, but rather they get sent off to prison because they live within nine hundred feet of a park unknowingly, or they go within, you know, there, there's so many onerous restrictions, and I think the legislature, I mean, they know what they're doing, and they're not soft these days by any stretch. And by local, I mean, I know it sounds politically correct, just let's, let's get them, let's just pound these guys, let's pound them, let's pound them. But there's a lot of gray area cases where people are on probation who maybe are not overwhelmingly guilty, but they plea because they can't risk life in prison. And the ones who, in my opinion, are truly guilty, they're in prison with the overwhelming evidence. It's the gray area cases where oftentimes people plea because they don't have the courage to pull the trigger and roll the dice and go to trial, because when you go to trial on those allegations, you're playing, it's a life sentence if you're found guilty. And not everybody has the courage to play the game, Russian roulette, and actually go to trial on those. So they plea to probation, and then they end up in prison, like I said, not because of the crime they're accused of, but because they violate one of these onerous restrictions about license plates and registering and tags and fifteen hundred feet or twenty-five hundred feet, I guess it could go up to. And this is all via the crow. And so I don't know what the rationale would be of a thousand versus fifteen hundred, other than just being politically correct, you know, and being tough on crime and just pound these people. I get it. But there's a lot of people who I think are caught in the net, and they end up getting severe sanctions for little stuff like this. I, I think it's dangerous to sit there and say that an innocent person, like, we are now all banned from going to a playground?
No, that's not, that's not it, Don. What ultimately, and Russ, correct me if I'm wrong, but if you're not accompanying a child, if you're not a grandparent, if you're not a caretaker, and, and really, it's just to keep the creeps away from, from our, our children, and as public safety is a priority, especially when it comes to our children, you know, it's an extra added layer to make that initial contact, because as you know, in that sex crimes area, Don, a lot of these people may never get caught for, for years or even identified. So this is an additional, like I said, layer to make that contact or ring some bells in the community. There's gonna be signage up, and, and believe it or not, this is a, a major ordinance in one of the most liberal cities, New York City, when it came in under Giuliani, it's still being enforced to this day. And also, Chief Manny Marino worked down in Hollywood at the time, and it was successful down there in deterring those kind of people in the parks to let us know, hey, they're watching, or the community's watching. So, you know, I see what you're saying. The cop in me doesn't have a whole lot of sympathy for the predators, you know, and I don't think you do either. But, you know, anything in this area, I know my opinion, this is a no-brainer for me, and it's up to the investigation or the investigating officer deputy in discretion, as well as the state attorney's office to do their investigation, their due diligence, to see how far they want to do this, but ultimately as an, an added initial layer and a tool for our law enforcement to possibly use to protect everybody. I'm gonna vote for it.
Yeah, I know. I just, I don't see the rationale. I mean, I've, I've been dealing with this for thirty-three years, both as a prosecutor and a defense attorney, so I, I see this in the, in the detail daily, okay? And it's not, it sounds good to sit there and say all these cases originate from playgrounds, but I can tell you in my experience over thirty-three years, I don't think I've ever had a case where a child was abducted from a playground and molested. Okay? It's usually from in a bedroom in a house or something like that. So to sit there and just come up with this arbitrary feel-good rule that you can't go to a playground, I mean, we're, we're taking away everybody's rights as a person. You know, I believe in the freedom of travel, and if a person wants to go, if your basketball rolls into the, I don't know the reasoning behind it, but I think it's just kind of an arbitrary rule to sit there and say playgrounds. That's the only place children ever get abducted is playgrounds or molested. That's just, it sounds good, but that's not the reality of it. And that's why I just disagree with this. And going from a thousand feet to fifteen hundred feet, I'd like to see the mapping, because if you're saying that takes away a third of the county, I mean, that's, that's a big area, and I know these people have a hard enough time, you know, it gets to be tantamount to banishment, which we've done away with. You know, you can't have banishment anymore, and so if you get too big of a restrictive area, you've basically committed banishment of it as a government. And the third thing is putting the owner, the, the burden on a landlord to do this intense background check, I think is, is not proper. I mean, they have to check in with the sheriff's office, the sheriff's office has all this mapping and all this stuff. I mean, when the person registers with their new address, it should be on the sheriff's office in that probation, or the person who's already had his due process, who's either pled or been found guilty, put it on them. I don't know why we'd wanna make a landlord liable or an insurer of this person when there's already things in place to make sure that doesn't happen.
I've, I've set my case.
I know, me too.
I disagree. I don't, when it comes to the kids, this is in line with some state legislation, legislature that's going on. It's in line, I just, I can't find anything bad to, to say about it. If, if it helps out our law enforcement and our families and our kids, if this works one time, it pays for itself. One time, it pays for itself when it comes to that.
But Danny, I mean, so, okay, so why not make it Little League fields? Why should a guy ever be allowed by himself at a Little League field? Or why should a guy ever be allowed to go to a children's museum? Or why should a guy ever be allowed to go? I mean, if we're gonna have these feel-good, you know, protected children type ordinances, then let's not limit it to playgrounds. I mean, let's make it to where anywhere children can be.
That's why it has to be narrow and scoped, Don. And there's plenty of case law, and this has been challenged, but, but now, I don't think it's, you know, I don't know if we play judge and jury right, right now with it, but, I mean, this, this has been around for a while, and it's been challenged, and it's, it's prevailed. There's a lot of areas, and it's working with our neighbors to the south and many other counties. I think it'll work here.
Okay. That's why I looked down the, the dais that you, Don, because I, I had assumed you probably came across this, and this is, this is important, it's emotional. I'm gonna ask that if the conversation back and forth, please go through the, the chair. I, I don't wanna stifle it, but I don't want it to, to, um, it's, it's okay. It's a, it's an important issue. I, so, I didn't press the button yet, so, Matt Reinhart.
Thank you, Chair. I see both sides.
Yeah.
I, I do, and I respect that. I mean, I, I look to you for the attorney version, and you mentioned, you know, you've seen this for so many years, and I have too, from the jail perspective, and then my entire career, it was, and I, I've said this a million times, it was the hardest thing to deal with, was dealing with those individuals. I tell you that right now. You know, we all have kids, I have grandkids, I get it. Now, with respect to the adults that are not accompanying a child, I get it, but I'm gonna play devil's advocate. I have seen adults, and when I say adults, over the age of eighteen, on a swing set, and that means that if that individual's on the swing set and the child comes up, ooh, I gotta go, or else I'm, I'm gonna face a five thousand dollar fine or sixty days in jail, or whatever the case is. I, I have, I have a problem with that, because then you're saying, you're almost saying they're, they, they could be potentially guilty of something, so you're, you're playing judge and jury to me. I don't know, that's the way I view it. So you're, you're saying that that person right there had to leave because potentially he could cause harm to that child, but there's no evidence to support that. I, I don't know, that's, I have issue with the second part of that, I don't have issue with the first part, but I'll leave it at that and listen to what everybody else has to say.
Jake Johansson.
Thank you, sir. Regarding the, the playground, as you all mentioned last time, I did invite Keith Chester to get on a swing and enjoy himself a little bit, so he can't do that. Matt, you brought up that if a kid comes, you gotta leave. The way I read it, you can't be there in the first place. So, you know, the good news is, is you can probably go to fifteen to the sixteen cities and, and hit that swing set, but I, I, I have a problem with that because of the same thing Don said. We can't protect everybody from everything, and, and this is one of the, one of the things. Have I left my four-year-old on a playground alone? You bet I have. On, on a Navy base with other parents that we knew there. I can't imagine, and maybe I'm missing out on, on how it works these days, but I can't imagine a, a playground where there's not an adult who, who doesn't see something that's not right. And, and if it happens, if it's something that can happen on a playground, it can happen in a museum, it can happen, we let four-year-olds get off the bus and walk two blocks to their house, it can happen there. So are we gonna have county, uh, school board people hired to escort these kids home once they come off the bus? We talked earlier about the, about the school off of Hazen. Kids are gonna have to walk. They're, they're, they're at risk right there for a snatch and go. We can't protect everybody from everything, and, and I think parents by and large, because of the, because of that whole movie we watched where kids were getting snatched from the, from the, from the playground, that they're a little sensitive to that, and if something's not quite right, I, I don't know if George gets the calls, but at the city, people would call the city and go, there's a weird guy in, on the side of our road, in his car, just sitting there. Well, you go out, you send a cop out there, what are they doing? They, they pulled over to text, because that's what we're supposed to do. They're not weirdos, they're not psychos, they're just people parked on your public road. So I think we're hypersensitive to that. I, I don't, I don't know if this is gonna get me to where, where I wanna go, the, the playground piece. Thank you.
David Santiago.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Don, I mean, your, your comments are, I think, are on point with, on, on both topics. We certainly should see the effects of the, the map, all right? I think it's also important for the council to understand the distinction between offender and predator. I think you said predator, somebody said offender. They're very, very different. And we, I've dealt with this in the legislature, it's come up several times, and, you know, the, you hear stories from folks that come up and testify committee, committee, and you often get set back a little bit when you hear the Romeo Juliet scenario, right? Seventeen, eighteen-year-old or eighteen-year-old, sixteen-year-old, that they may have now been married twenty-five years still at this point or something. Those, those stories also tell the real-life implications of this. I certainly leverage your expertise, your experience, that you've dealt with this. As I said earlier, I said, I believe you, right? I think what better real-life experience than someone who's done this for thirty years to, to see the real-life implications of this? The, the second portion, and by the way, all of this, I think, is well-intentioned, right? But the, the second portion, I'm worried about unintended consequences that it could have. I think my colleagues have pointed out several scenarios on where it could be problematic. So the, the second one, I, I think we shouldn't move forward with. The first one, I think we should see the data, and then have a real conversation on how this applies to offenders versus predators, and comparing that to state law, and then make a decision then. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Danny Robbins.
Mr. Brown and Mr. Bailey, are you able to clarify a little bit more in depth when it comes to what is children's equipment? You know, we're talking about swings, but there's, there's, and you gotta ask yourself, and where I'm getting it is, what is reasonable? Is it reasonable for an adult that doesn't have a child to get on designated children's equipment? You with me? You track, you, you tracking me? Is that how you guys would regulate this, or is that what the other cities or jurisdictions have, have done? So I know they probably wouldn't be doing this for their health if it, if it wasn't an issue or a deterrent for these people that shouldn't be there.
Right, so when, when Mike first asked me some questions about this topic, right, I, there was some, some questions, I had a series of questions, right? Because in a lot of our parks, we've got twenty-three playgrounds countywide, and there are some pavilions that are directly adjacent to a playground, there's a barbecue grill there, and, and families, you know, have birthday parties and things like that. So I said, well, what happened to those folks? And we started to nail down where the designated areas would be, so we not, we nailed it down to just the safety surface. So now, if you're a, an eighteen-year-old and you're at a picnic, and you wanna go swing on a swing with your, with your girlfriend, you can't do that, even, you know, you just can't, even if there's no children there. I mean, that's the way we're, we're proceeding this. So there, there was some, some deliberation as we're, as we're talking about that, you know, but, but someone just hanging out, you know, when you're, you got kids on the, on the playground, and usually, I mean, every time I'm at a park, I see a, a parent with a child, they're there, and they're not alone. I don't see a lot of kids alone, right, without a parent. We do have a situation at, at Rachel Robinson Playyard, which is just outside of the Daytona Library, that you have, you can't go through the library, or you can't get to that playground without going through the library and having an adult with a child. They won't let you out. That's a fenced-in area, that's a, a scenario that you're talking about. You can't go out there if you're without, without a child. And so that's, that's one of the areas where I think where you're heading is one, is where we manage that effectively, because it's a fenced-in area, you can't get into that area unless you have, you have a, a minor with you.
And, and Mr. Brown, if this was adopted, would this scenario, if there was signage up, would it create a greater level of maybe reasonable suspicion or probable cause to contact that person? If it was, if law enforcement or if there was a concerned citizen, would this help legally justify contacting this individual? Because you gotta remember, all these stuff is, is discretionary based in a lot of cases. Now, if it's an innocent, kids playing or playing with their girlfriend, I think there was a stipulation where something was twelve years old, like, there was something about eighteen and twelve, do you remember that in here? There was some H, there was some H, there were some numbers in there, but, but you see what I'm, what I'm getting at? Would this give our law enforcement maybe an added reason to contact them if there's any doubt or suspicion, just to verify? I mean, because if they're not causing a problem, and they're not damaging, you know, the children's equipment, no harm, no foul, hey, guys, just be aware of this, you know? This is very target-specific, and I wanna remind people, this is very narrow in scope. We wanna get these, these, or I want the predators and your, your violent offenders. That is it.
I mean, as an attorney, I'm kinda leery to say what an officer, you know, how they, each individual's a little different, how they determine what their level of reasonable suspicion or probable cause is, so I don't wanna put something in somebody else's mind. I, I'm not sure that just posting it or, or somebody being unaccompanied necessarily rises to a level to allow an additional contact. I'd leave that to an officer at their discretion to be able to articulate. I will say that one of the compelling government interests in ensuring that adults are, are not using the playground or not there without an accompanying minor, is a lot of courts have found that play areas are intended to furnish and provide age-appropriate recreational for minors, and so the use of that open space or those equipment for those ages intended is, is one of the interests also that government has in ensuring, so I, I don't know if that answers your question, but...
Yeah, no, I get it, because it seems pretty logical. If you don't have a kid, I just don't see the reason to be hanging out or loitering in those areas where, where kids are, small children are playing, and I don't know, I just think most, and I see Don's point as an attorney, you know, but I think most parents would be on, on board with this. That's all I'll say.
Troy Kent.
Thank you, Chairman. Let me just start, Vice Chair Robbins, I think this is very well intentions, intended by you, and I applaud you for tackling this. You know, I think there have been some comments, I appreciate everyone's comments, but, you know, Don, you, you've lived, you've lived this, like you said, for thirty years, and I really appreciate your insight into some unintended consequences. We've heard that from several council members. And, you know, with, with that being said, Danny, like I said, I appreciate that you, you brought this to the forefront, but after hearing what I've heard, at this time, I'm gonna withdraw my second, just because I don't even know that we have to have this for a vote, so I'm gonna withdraw that, my second at this time.
Okay. Wait, still have the motion by Robbins without a second. The second's been withdrawn. Can somebody else resecond it, or is...
Was that withdrawn on both or just one?
It, it was, yeah, on both of them.
Okay.
There could be a, a new second if there is one.
Is there, Don, did you still wanna see the data on the fifteen hundred feet, or are you just...
Sure, I, I mean, I'd be interested in seeing that, because, you know, I, I've dealt with people who, you know, basically, well, the twenty-five hundred foot restriction, I mean, it really is tantamount to banishment, you know, and that's, you know, that's a half mile. I'm not saying we're going to that extreme, but I know there's some jurisdictions that have gone to that extreme, and that's via the crow.
Yeah.
Right? You're talking via the crow. So, I mean, that's a long way, and I don't know, it's just, I have a six-year-old daughter, and if somebody did something like that to my six-year-old daughter, I'd wanna kill him. I would string him up and just, I get it, and I get the passion behind what you're trying to do is to get rid of these people. But you have to understand, maybe it's because of having defended these people for thirty years, that you get to know some of these scenarios. There's a lot of innocent people. You understand when you're accused of that. If I accused you of doing that to my six-year-old daughter, because I just don't like you, you're faced with life in prison, minimum mandatory life in prison. And you would probably say, well, Dempsey's a nut, you know, and Dempsey's just falsely accusing me of this, so I'm just gonna take it to trial, and you'll probably win. But I use the same analogy with Russian roulette, okay? We all know what that is, it's one bullet and five empty chamber, and I, your chances of winning at Russian roulette are probably the same as going to trial on my accusation against you. You'll probably win. You'll probably win, but there is that bad jury, there is that bad day, there is that time when that bullet might be in your chamber. And I don't think any of us up here would play Russian roulette for a million dollars because we don't have the courage to do it. There's a lot of people who get falsely accused. The state attorney's office, as good as they are, I work with them all the time, the sheriff's office, great people, they do a wonderful job, but a lot of times, it's just my word against yours. You know, there's a lot of people, the ones who are truly guilty, the DNA, all this stuff, all the evidence stacked up against them, the confessions, they're in prison, okay? It's the ones where a lot of times, it's just somebody's word against another and they don't have enough nerve to go to trial and pull the trigger. So they plead. You're offered by the prosecutor probation as a sex offender or you want to go to trial. A lot of people don't have the courage to go to trial. So they end up taking a plea as a sex offender. And Mr. Santiago's right, there's a big difference between predator and offender.
How about if it was, Chair, is it okay if I...
I don't care, he can talk. I'm sorry. But I'm just saying, that's why there's a lot, that's why maybe, in having dealt with a lot of the people who were caught in the net of rolling the dice and going to trial or pulling the trigger, I mean, rolling the dice or taking a plea where you're guaranteed no prison.
What happens if they're a regular, if we can tailor the statute for 1,500-foot for convicted sexual predators?
I understand. And, but it's, I'd like to see the map, I really would, but I guess that's kind of why...
I'll make that motion.
Not why I am overly in favor of this because there are so many restrictions. I see so many people go to prison, not because they're accused, not because you're accused of molesting my daughter. You take the plea because you don't want to play the game. So as a result, you're put on probation. Now you've got to register your car every so many months and you've got to do this and you can't be within so many feet of this and that and the other. And now, so you've got all these restrictions on you because now you're labeled. And believe me, the state attorney is, they prosecute these cases, the sheriff's office, they pursue these cases, the state of Florida and their legislature, they hammer people with this stuff. I mean, people, a lot of times go to prison not because of what they're accused of doing, it's because they went within 200 feet of a whatever. Or now they're alone at a playground or, I mean, they can't even go to playgrounds. I mean, they're restricted with playgrounds, you know, you go to every subdivision has a playground, so now they can't live there. You know, now if you add to the areas where they can't live, I mean, basically we've on tantamount to banishment. So I just, I guess maybe I've just seen both sides of it. There's people who are truly guilty and they deserve every bit of the punishment they get. They deserve every, whatever they get in prison for years. But it's the innocent people who get accused of something who don't have the courage to go to trial, so they cop a plea. I guess that's who I'm more compassionate for. And so that's why I just, I think we should just leave the legislature to do their thing. They're very tough. The legislature is not getting softer on crime, they're getting tougher with every legislative session, I think.
And I think I could, I can side with you if I saw the actual conviction rates or what is factual or what is maybe the guy that was taking a leak on the side of the highway and now is a sexual offender.
Let's do this. I think that...
If I can make one more point.
You can. Let me say this, you've made really good points and I'm going to give you the opportunity to finish it. And then I think we see this losing support and Vice Chair, I think it would be, I know there's still some things you want to see, if you would withdraw the motion maybe and make a new motion to see the evidence that you want to see. But Don, go ahead and finish your...
I was just going to say, is there any documented cases where a kid has been snatched from a playground? Are we aware of one case where a kid's been snatched from a playground to the point where, I mean, let alone...
The sheriff's office just did a...
That's something we'd have to ask the sheriff's office, we're not aware of that kind of information.
And that's fine. I mean, I'm all about protecting the children, obviously. I mean, I've got my own, but it's just these feel-good laws and when there's not even any documented cases, I mean, it's just, we're now criminalizing a guy who may want to just go sit on a swing set for innocent conduct for, I mean, I would say the overwhelming majority of kids at the playground are being supervised by their parents anyway. I mean, it's just, it just seems like a, it's well-intended and I appreciate that, but I just don't know if it's really going to solve anything. It's just going to create more criminals than it's going to deter.
So how about this, Chair? I'll go ahead and I'll withdraw that from the equation and what I will do is make a motion to look at the enforcement of sexual predators at 1,500 feet versus 1,000 feet and maybe bring forward a map unless we have one. And I don't know if right now is the appropriate time to get into that. We can bring, I'm comfortable with bringing it back. This is not a pressing matter, but it's up to council.
I will second that part of it for the predator.
Okay. So now we have a motion. I want to make sure that the attorney understands that enforcement, you said you wanted to see a map of the enforcement of sexual predators.
No, a map of what 1,500 feet looks like, but if we do change it, it would be to sexual predators and maybe not sexual offenders. We're narrowing the scope to convicted bad people, you know?
Okay. So you're asking staff, the attorneys, whoever on staff to do that research and come back with...
I think I can say it, sir. So the direction is to bring back the additional proposal for possibly considering an ordinance for 1,500 feet of an additional residency restriction for sexual predators as defined under the state statute with the evidence to show what that would look like with that additional 500 feet and how the impact would be to residents in the county with additional information if there is, if there's been anybody as well, although this isn't, is this playground thing about snatching, is that still evidence? That's not, right? Because we're just talking about the residency requirement.
I don't, I don't think it would generate the support. I mean, I'm just curious, I'm going to research it, but that's not what the motion's for. I'm happy with this. If we come up with any data, I'll be more than happy to get it to the council on any other subject.
Well, if the motion passes, I mean, we certainly can get with your mapping staff, your GIS staff to produce what we can visually so you can see it.
Okay. So you're keeping the motion and Matt Reinhart as the second. And I hope everybody understands what we're voting on. I'm not sure that I do, but if the attorneys think that you know what you're going and looking after, that's what makes this so hard. There's not a person up here that wants to coddle or give any opportunity to perverts. But I'm really concerned with the unintended consequences of this. So the motion on the floor, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So the motion carries seven to zero to bring back more information, item 18. Item 19...